The Board was in closed session tonight for student residency, employment of employee, negotiations, and approval of closed session minutes. We are going to go back into closed session after this open session to continue discussion of employment of employee. Okay, we have six members present, one absent. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks for coming. We have student and staff recognition tonight. First is York's girls' badminton team, second place.
Yeah. We're going to invite the badminton team up who is present. And Nicole Young, the coach, is here this evening to present the team and their accomplishments, which is really terrific.
Good evening. My name's Nicole Young. I've been the badminton coach here at York High School for the last nine years, and it's been a pleasure to work with these two for the last two years. Hannah and Emily Spolstra were at state level last year. They placed in the top eight. They needed to obviously win out of our sectional in order to go to the state meet. This year, they won three straight consecutive matches at our sectional meet, took the sectional title, and then advanced on to the state tournament in Eastern Illinois. Whereas on Friday, we do kind of a prelim, the top 16, then move on to Saturday. They won three straight matches out to advance to the top 16. From there, we played a lock for a team which we had beat prior, so we knew we were in pretty good standings. Hopefully, after defeating them, we were up against Mount Prospect, which we had lost prior to this season. With that, we had taken them to three matches. Emily and Hannah prevailed and went into the state tournament final championship round, which at one point, we laughed because Hannah was shaking so bad receiving the actual serve for the birdie. But overall season, they were 39 and four, which is a pretty big accomplishment, only losing four times, and one of the times was the Mount Prospect team that we ended up defeating to advance to the state title. And this year, obviously, taking runner-up to Buffalo Grove, which were state champions last year. So it's been my pleasure to coach these girls for the last two years. I'm going to miss them, and I promise this time when I announce I'm not going to cry because I've been working with these girls hand-in-hand for the last four years in the badminton program, and it's been such a pleasure. So we wish them luck. They're going Elmhurst College next year. They're hopefully going to, I'm going to beg them to come into the gym to play a little bit. Hopefully, they are agreeing to it, so hopefully, we'll be there, and I'm going to have them work with some of our younger girls. But what great athletes York High School has right here.
Congratulations.
And I have to say, because I have attempted badminton, I know how impressive this is, and whatever's in the Spolstra gene pool is missing from the Emily Bastido gene pool, or else it's to Nicole's credit. She's a great coach, too. Let me read the proclamation, and then we're going to have you guys shake everybody's hand. Whereas the Illinois High School Association governs the equitable participation in interscholastic athletics and activities that enrich the educational experience. And whereas the school personnel, students, parents, and taxpayers have long recognized and endorsed the role of the IHSA, a nonprofit voluntary organization composed of Illinois high schools, each represented by its principal or designated representative, in providing supervision, control, and promotion of the interscholastic activities, athletic and nonathletic, in which students engaged. And whereas educators across the USA believe that participation in interscholastic activities offers students significant lifetime learning experiences that cannot be duplicated in any other instructional setting. And whereas York Community High School class of 2015, recent graduates Emily Spolstra and Hannah Spolstra qualified to play at the state level through the sectional meet, where they won three straight matches and were named conference sectional champions for the second consecutive year. And whereas the IHSA state badminton meet held on May 16, 2015, at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston, Illinois, Emily and Hannah scored as runners-up in the badminton doubles in addition to earning all-state honors. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and their coach, Nicole Belacomo Young, along with assistant coaches Pia Bartoli and Terry Clark for these outstanding achievements. All right. So I'm going to hand these to you guys, and then ask you to talk. Congratulations.
All right, take this now. Our next group is, we want to recognize the York Stock Market Game State Competition competitors. I'm going to invite Laura Olson up and the team. You want to take it up? While they're coming up, if you haven't figured this out yet, this team wins this competition just about every year and does impressive portfolio work. So if you're looking to invest, you may want to tap into this team next year and figure out what they're investing in because they, in a number of years, have done really well.
You should say that. You brought her for closing. What do you have to add?
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for inviting us here tonight, and thank you for recognizing my students. I, too, am very proud of them. And as you can see from their portfolio, they invested the old-fashioned way. They invested in companies that they recognized, companies that they knew. They didn't, you know, buy $250,000 worth of a tech stock on margin, or, you know, sell a stock short that, you know, Uncle heard about on a blog somewhere. So they really did it the old-fashioned way, and they beat the S&amp;P 500. There was only two teams in our entire class who were over $100,000 at the end of the three months, so really proud of them. So take a look at the stocks, and if you have any questions, the guys will be happy to answer them for you. So thank you.
Just for the audience, this team, they started with $100,000, and their portfolio value at the end was $121,000. Pretty good.
I know there's some folks down in Springfield running a pension that could use a little help. So congratulations. It's great to see you guys back here every year. Let me read the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Stock Market Game teaches and reinforces critical thinking, decision-making, independent research, cooperation, and communication, as well as saving and investing. And whereas the game is a statewide competition run by Econ Illinois of Northern Illinois University's Division of Outreach, Engagement, and Regional Development, which allows students to use real internet research and news updates, making the simulation even better mirror of the real marketplace. And whereas teams started with a virtual cash account of $100,000 and strove to create the best-performing portfolio using a live trading simulation while researching and evaluating stocks to make decisions based on what they had learned over a three-month period. And whereas this team finished the session with a portfolio value of $121,116.55, more impressively, beating the S&amp;P 500 by more than 20 points, and finishing higher than 467 teams in grades 9 through 12 from across the state. And whereas York High School students Timothy Delaney, David Nurek, and Irvin Profit?
Yeah.
That's pretty good. I like. Finished in first place statewide in the grade 9 to 12 division of the late spring session, in which 468 stock market teams from 20 schools competed. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and their teacher, Laura Olson, along with Jessica Weldon, Division Chair, Research and Social Science, for these outstanding achievements. Thank you.
Sarah Stamp will do the honors for this group if you'd come up.
Thank you. I, too, want to start by thanking the Board for inviting me and for recognizing both Will and Justin here tonight. Both Will and Justin were members of our varsity Science Olympiad team, representing Bryan this year. Science Olympiad is a school club that allows students to pursue their talents and love for both science and math. An extraordinary amount of time is put into this club, and we started practicing way back in September and just finished up in April. Will and Justin competed first with the varsity team at Regionals in COD, which was on March 14th, which funny enough was Pi Day, so us science nerds were pretty excited about that. They placed third in their bottle rocket event there at Regionals. And then from that point, they kind of went back to practicing and fine-tuning their rockets. And with our third-place finish for them at Regionals, our Bryan team placed overall third at Regionals and won a bid to state. So at state, once they had their new rockets and ideas, they actually placed second overall, competing with 49 other schools in the state of Illinois. These two young men deserve to be recognized for their determination and hard work throughout this season. And Will and Justin, I speak not only for myself, but for your parents and your Bryan team and your community. We are extremely proud of the both of you. Congratulations.
This year, I was able to get involved with Science Olympiad at Bryan. I have a sixth-grade daughter, and she was part of the JV team that worked with these two, these two students. So anyway, it's a great, a great club. I just want to say thank you to all the parent coaches. Thank you to Mrs. Sam. It was a fantastic experience, and I really enjoyed coaching one of the events. So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Science Olympiad is a nonprofit organization devoted to improving the quality of science education, increasing student interest in science, and providing recognition for outstanding achievement in science education by both students and teachers. And whereas ISO tournaments are rigorous academic interscholastic competitions which students prepare for during the year that consist of a series of team events which are challenging, motivational, and well-balanced between the various science disciplines of biology, earth science, chemistry, physics, and technology. And whereas all events require teamwork, group planning, and cooperation with the emphasis on learning, participation, interaction, having fun, and developing team spirit. And whereas, since the fall, the Bryan Middle School Science Olympiad team has met on a weekly basis to prepare for the tournament with the assistance of parent volunteers supporting and coaching the teams. And whereas this is the second year in a row that Bryan's Science Olympiad team has advanced to the state tournament. And whereas on April 18, 2015, in Champaign-Urbana at the University of Illinois, the Bryan Science Olympiad team, composed of 15 varsity members and four junior varsity members, competed in 23 various build and test events, as well as five trial events, placing in the AA Division, the highest group available to state-bound teams. And whereas at that time, William Phillips and Justin Zellinger, who competed in multiple events throughout the day, earned a second place overall in the bottle rocket competition. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to Bryan Middle School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, volunteer coaches, and their Science Olympiad coach, Sarah Stamp, for these outstanding achievements.
We have one more recognition for our students tonight, and that is to recognize the outstanding Illinois senior gymnast in the state of Illinois. And I'd like to ask Alex Banasek and the guy that has that big trophy I see in the back of the room sitting to introduce.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Alex Banasek. I am the boys' gymnastics coach at York High School. Just a little bit of background knowledge on this particular award over here. The IHSGCA is the Coaches Association for the entire state of Illinois, and they give out this trophy every single year to the athlete that represents the spirit of high school gymnastics. And you might be asking yourself, what does that mean exactly? There's a lot of things that could be, there's a lot of things that could go into that particular trophy and that particular description. Essentially, what it means is that the trophy is meant to represent an athlete dedicated to the sport of gymnastics who represents sportsmanship, character, scholarship, as well as giving back to the community. Essentially, an all-around award. And this trophy is voted on by every single state official, head coach, and assistant coach in Illinois, and it was awarded to Sam this year. To give a little bit more of a sense of how big of an award this is for gymnasts, it's the last time York High School gymnast won this award was in 1988, and that was by Keith Skorza. And I couldn't think of a more appropriate person to give this award to than Sam Bode. Over the last, I've had the privilege and honor to watch Sam develop into a phenomenal all-around human being over the last three years. Not only has he grown as a gymnast, taking first in conference in the all-around, as well as taking several event titles, qualifying for state on every single event, and proceeding to capture a top-20 finish on every single event, including the all-around. Sam has also demonstrated his desire and dedication to the sport of gymnastics by using his time on the weekends to judge younger gymnasts, and is a licensed state official in Illinois, as well as the national governing body of USA gymnastics. Sam also has volunteered his time abroad building project, for building projects in Mexico, as well as in Costa Rica. And it is my pleasure and honor to speak on his behalf, as well as to congratulate him on winning this award. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak on his behalf.
So Coach Alex, yes, it's been a pleasure, you said, to watch Sam grow in these years that you have coached him. And I likewise am honored to recognize Sam and watch Sam grow up from the days when my son babysat him. So yes, fine young man. So this was a great, a great capture of all of the qualities that you look for in recognize, recognizing students for this achievement. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association, founded in 1961, is a nonprofit organization consisting of head coaches, assistant coaches, and judges that support boys' gymnastics in Illinois, and whose purpose is to perpetuate, improve, and protect the sport of boys' gymnastics in all aspects. And whereas the IHSGCA each year chooses an outstanding Illinois senior gymnast using the following criteria. A gymnast must have three consecutive years of participation in the IHSA gymnastics, demonstrate leadership, citizenship, good moral and ethical behavior, and loyalty to Illinois high school gymnasts, or gymnastics. Compete in the entire state series, and have a 3.0 GPA or higher, or be in the top one-third of their class. And whereas Samuel Bode, York Community High School class of 2015 graduate, was selected by the IHSGCA to receive the outstanding Illinois senior gymnast at the Illinois High School Association State Meet Award Ceremony on May 16, 2015, at Hinsdale Central High School. And whereas Sam has consistently met and exceeded these standards of excellence, as judged by the IHSGCA, by not only excelling in the sport of boys' gymnastics, but also exhibiting the humanitarian efforts of volunteering outside of school, as well as receiving the Fernando Mendoza Memorial Scholarship. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Sam, his parents, and coach, Alex Banasek, along with assistant coach Dave Isray, for these outstanding achievements. Thank you.
Now, we'd like to turn to honoring some of our own employees. We have shining star recommendations that will be given out this evening. This is a recognition of employees that go above and beyond the call of duty. They're recognized by fellow employees, and the Board takes the time out, and their Board meetings to honor our employees. So we're going to, who's going to start this evening?
Can we get everyone to come up?
If you want, yeah. All shining stars, if you want to come up in advance. Don't be shy.
And it is great. It is the Board's honor and privilege to be able to recognize the shining stars that their peers have identified. So let me first start with Rocco Mato. And he was lead custodian at Bryan, nominated by Michelle Seleski, Ethi Nasus, Jeremy Thomas, and Joseph Fowler. Hard-working, dedicated, and kind-hearted are just a few words that only begin to describe Rocco's strong presence. On any given day, Rocco is not only constantly tending to the endless maintenance needs of the schools, but more importantly, he is helping to keep the learning and working environment safe for the student and faculty. Rocco adds a sense of positivity to the school, always greeting staff in the hallways. Thank you so much, Rocco. I also want to recognize, please help me if I mispronounce this name, please forgive me, Thimy Trebecca?
Hey.
Thimy Trebecca, thank you.
You're welcome.
Custodian at Jackson, nominated by Laura Roney and Laura Parrot. Thimy goes above and beyond to not just take care of the school, but its students and staff as well. In addition to keeping the building looking its best, he cares for all the students. He will take a student under his wing like an assistant to help them calm down and refocus by talking with them and showing them how his job works. All the students adore and respect him. Thank you.
Thank you. Reading Specialist Churchville, nominated by Denise Hamilton and Kevin Temple. Leah is a first-year reading specialist and coach at Churchville. Even though she is new to the district, she stepped up and has taken on many challenges. Leah not only assists her colleagues as she coaches them, she also has been taking on additional responsibility, as three of her colleagues have been out on maternity leave. She has taught extra classes, planned additional lessons, sat in on multiple data review sessions, and became the interim seventh-grade team leader for three months. Through all her hard work and dedication, she has kept smiling and continues to be willing to help in any way she can. Thank you, Leah.
Hi.
Hi. Been a few years. Kristen Gates, Spanish teacher at Sandberg, nominated by Tracy Morsor and Nancy Bensfield. For several years now, Kristen has taken the leadership role in the school's geranium organization. She has done everything from organizing birthday buddies to holiday events to invitations for staff celebrations. This truly is a thankless job, but without Kristen, the staff spirit would not be what it is today. Kristen Gates. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations to all of you. We're also going to be recognizing some employees who are not here tonight, several of them. The first off, Todd Mooney, District Media Staff, nominated by Sandy Wenig and Elizabeth Kawa. When the Emerson School sound system suddenly failed on the day of their school performance, Todd rushed out to the school to assist in its repair. When it was determined that the system was unfixable, he then proceeded to help some other parent volunteers to set up a supplemental system. He worked on this project for over four hours. The show would not have gone on without his assistance. Congratulations, Todd Mooney. Secondly, Liz Marchelles, technology coach at Sandberg, Kim Lambert Haake, counselor at Sandberg, and Kelly Frederick, reading special at Sandberg. They were nominated by Regina Hughes and Brittany Sterns. Liz, Kim, and Kelly put forth a lot of effort, a lot of time and effort to make Sandberg's student-faculty basketball game a success. Liz helped by finding videos to illustrate the minute-to-win-it games. She also helped gather materials to help these games come to life. Kim was instrumental in planning the game and helping students get involved. She spearheaded the setup and takedown of each minute-to-win-it game. Kelly put in countless hours to help plan for the game. She took on a PBIS leadership role when helping to plan the game as well. So congratulations to Liz, Kim, and Kelly.
Okay, we can take a one- or two-minute break for anyone that needs to leave. Are there any public comments? Okay. So we'll move on to Superintendent's Communication, Freedom of Information Act requests.
Yes, this evening, we have one FOIA request, and that was regarding expenses from the district that we received, and it was granted. My second item on the agenda is just to present to the Board of Education an update on the two-year strategic plan. This plan is, the purpose is to serve as a blueprint for the district moving forward over the next two years, and it represents the major initiatives that I think the Board of Education would be facing. Dave, could you put that up? So, this was a little different than the presentation that I did with the Board of Education last summer. This has been updated and revised. And what I've done is, I've looked two years out, and I've looked at every major division of the school district and tried to give you a snapshot from probably the 30,000-foot view on what some of the challenges and some of the opportunities will be over the next two years. So going into the 1516 school year, and then 1617. So, in the, starting with communication, obviously, it's, most of what's gonna happen over the next two years is the important community engagement process. And that process has already started. The Communication Department, Malia, has been working with Unicom. We now have an identified facilitation team. We have two co-chairs. We are in the process of identifying the big issue topics that we wanna bring out to the forum. And that process for the whole community will start in September. And, Malia, do we have a date for the first forum yet, or is that still kinda up in the air? Still, still working on it. So, but I believe the first forum, and we're probably gonna hold all the forums, probably at York and the Commons. We think it's probably the best space that we could find in the community that really lends itself to anywhere from 300 to 400 community members coming in, sitting at small tables, and having discussions about the topic for the evening. So, that will begin in September. We will finalize the topics, finalize that process at the next meeting. As I said, we have another meeting in June to do that, and then moving forward for next year. So it's a great opportunity, I think, for the Board of Education, the new superintendent, and the administration to really engage the community in a lot of key topics that I think are gonna be really valuable for the board as you look for some direction from the community at some of the issues and challenges that are coming forward. Turning to the next one, the next division we're gonna talk about is Finance and Operations. And obviously, there are really three broad areas that we're gonna concentrate on strategically for the next two years. One is obviously facilities, both short-term and long-term, based on the demographic study and programming needs. And I think what we need to do next year is to really take some time to look at short-term enrollment trends in the buildings, and be prepared, if we have to, to make some program changes in the schools to free up space that may be tight in the coming two years. And so that would be a short-term need that I think needs to be looked at, probably early in the fall next year, and then, as you see, recommend short-term facility solutions. Obviously, the one that really sticks out is field. What is gonna happen to field? How fast will new residents move into that area? And what kind of things are we gonna have to plan for to make sure we have space for those students, short of doing a total elementary redistricting? That total elementary redistricting will be one of the key discussions with community engagement that will follow through for next year, and will probably help the board give some direction about where the community wants to go with redistricting or restructuring the elementary-middle schools. Transportation, we are going to have a new transportation company beginning next year. Obviously, we are hopeful we can really have increased efficiencies and improvement in the Transportation Department overall, and we think going with First Student will be a real plus with that. And then, obviously, budget, trying to prepare for revisions and being responsive to any changes in the state funding formula or the pension reform system. So that's, that's the challenges and opportunities for the Finance and Operations Department. Human Resources, I think there are three key areas. PRA, obviously, we've talked a lot about. The Joint Committee has unofficially been meeting all of this year. They will formally join next year and make a formal recommendation on what those student growth models are gonna look like going into the 1617 school year. The second one, obviously, is collective bargaining. We are continuing to bargain with Teachers Association, and hopefully, we'll have a formal agreement on negotiations by the end of going into next year. And then, teacher evaluation. We had a meeting today, as a matter of fact, to finalize tentative revision in how we're doing teacher evaluations across the district. That will result in a little more streamlining, and will really put the emphasis on student reflection and, or teacher reflection and change. So Jim has worked with the committee throughout the year to do that, and I think it's gonna be a welcome change in the amount of time that we're presently using on teacher evaluation. I don't think we lose anything in that process, but we will, again, by 1617, also have to add in student growth into that evaluation model. So next year, we'll be looking at assessment across the district, and then moving into the student growth model the following year. Next area is learning and teaching, always a busy, busy area. Three big things that are gonna go on next year, and this is really the heart of where I think the district is gonna be spending a lot of the time when it comes to dealing with teachers and professional development and where we're moving forward. One is curriculum development. You're gonna institute next year in the Curriculum Department a new writing program that will start next year. At the same time, Michelle and her staff are gonna begin a conceptual framework for ELA, and that'll be a major revision of that curriculum going K-12. And that is a different model than the district has been adopted in the past. However, it really takes advantage of being a unit-school district, and adopting curriculum on a K-12 model should really do a lot to make articulation between grade levels and between buildings much more cohesive than it presently is. And hopefully, once that process gets done, you'll have a very solid curriculum model across the district in ELA. A lot of work on assessment that is driven by PRA, as I previously talked about, for human resources. So we are gonna be identifying student growth, and as a matter of fact, at the elementary and middle school, we'll be using MAP data. At the high school, we'll be using Type II data, because we don't have a Type I data available to us at the high school level. What that means is, there's gonna be a lot of time to put in to write assessments at the high school for this coming year, to pilot those assessments, and be ready for the 1617 school year. The other piece of assessment is the data warehouse. The data warehouse will finish data uploads and deployment next year, and then do focus groups on stakeholder input into that process, with the idea that the following year, it'll be live, and people will start using the data warehouses at the building level, the district level, and even in individual classroom level. And finally, we've talked a lot about this, the MoMo Learning Implementation Plan. Obviously, over the next year is implementing that at York, finalizing what we're doing at the middle school, and then moving forward for the following year. And finally, Student Services related to the ELA curriculum development. We will need to bring Student Services, Special Education on board with that to determine how special ed supports those curriculum changes for students with challenges and disabilities. Assessment, kind of the same thing in parallel. How are we doing assessments for special education students and Special Ed Department? And then, teacher evaluation. Again, evaluation looks a little different for special ed teachers and support staff. We will be developing those and revising those throughout the 1516 school year to move into the following year. So, and I think that's it. So I don't know if the board has any questions, but what I, what I've tried to do here is just provide kind of a pathway that the board can look at over the next two years on key pieces that'll be moving forward. Lot going on, obviously, a lot of moving pieces, but I think having it in this form kinda helps move that process forward.
I just wanted to highlight that when Dave originally brought the strategic plan to the Performance Management Committee, one conversation that we had was professional development. And so, I just wanted to highlight that professional development is kinda threaded throughout all of this. And so I wanna make sure that we articulate that, that we communicate it, and that that is a priority for us.
Question on the learning and teaching, and I'm wondering, I know we had a side conversation about this, but can you articulate why college readiness is pulled out versus college and career readiness?
Thank you for that question, because we do always talk about college and career readiness. We want our students to be college and career-ready when they leave us. The reason it says only college there is because of a change in ACT. ACT has dropped their ePATH system, which is your, the explorer to plan. They'll still have ACT, but we no longer have those two assessments that we can use to start gauging whether or not children, the benchmarking of whether students will be college-ready. And ACT is really a college readiness assessment. So what we need to do with that, with that statement means ID, I think it says identify college readiness benchmark, we need to look at other avenues that are out there. And WEA MAP has a system. ACT has a new system called ASPIRE. Nobody's used it yet, so there's no real information on it, so we need to take some time to find out what we wanna use to start that benchmarking of trajectory, see if our students will be college-ready when they leave us. So that's why it's specific to college readiness. I'm sorry, yes, college readiness.
And I just thought of this. How does this affect the work keys, which used to be a part of that whole ACT process? Well, does that go away? Is there?
It has already. We did not do it this year.
I'm sorry if you said this and I missed it, but, so how will you use this? Is this gonna be available on the website? I think we have an outdated strategic plan, maybe, on the website. Will this replace that, and how else will you use it? Is it part of the community engagement?
Yeah, I think this will be part of the community engagement at some point. I think we can replace strategic plan with this so that you have a roadmap. I think it's, it's provided to the Board of Education and the district as, you know, a two-year plan. It doesn't mean it can't be revised, but at least there is a blueprint of where the district could go over the two-year. I think community engagement will be a big part of this, as we have that discussion with the community members about what the challenges and issues are that we need to be forward, and a lot of those are embedded in this, as you can see.
And thanks for leaving us a roadmap, Dave. There's a lot of work, a lot more work than five pages that went into that. I just wanted to point out that on the budget side, that we are operating underneath, under a long-term budget forecast, which does not assume anything other than the current reimbursement rate peration, state performance. So any pension shift, any funding formula change is all incremental to us, and I can't envision a situation where it's anything but negative. And so all of this stuff that we're doing here assumes a certain revenue stream that's, that's in our long-term, five-year plan. So to the extent that that changes, it has ripple effects throughout the entire plan. And, and so I think that everyone needs to be aware that we have not, it would just be too draconian to try to budget for what the state may or may not do. We will react to that when it comes. Unfortunately, we will have to take action to maintain a balanced budget when it does, so everybody just needs to understand that. Thank you.
We're moving on to student placement process.
Yes, I'm gonna turn this over initially to Michelle, who's gonna talk about our current student placement process related to REACH and student placement across the district, and then entertain any questions or comments from the Board of Education. Michelle?
When we begin, when we have a process, when students start being placed in other classes, does start with the third grade with REACH. And so, as you know, right now, we use an achievement score and some teacher recommendations. And we have recommended and will begin starting to use a cognitive score next year with second grade, fifth grade, and seventh grade. We did use the COGAT this year for our seventh graders that are in geometry, to help us identify the top 5 to 8 percent that would go into a higher track of geometry in eighth grade. I mean, that data really helped us to, to look at the student with the COGAT, the, so the cognitive abilities, the achievement abilities, and teacher recommendations. One thing that we did find in the process is that we identified the students a little too late for our principals. We really are going to be shooting for an identification of making sure that we have identified all the students by spring break, which would then give parents and teachers the opportunity to appeal a decision in the month of April, which would mean they would have to formally put in an appeal, and then go through the appeal process, that we'd still have all students identified by early May. Because principals need to work on sections and make sure that they have the right teaching staff in place if we need to provide any professional learning over the summer that allows us an opportunity to think through that. So that is one thing that we've learned this year with the identification. Besides bringing in the cognitive, which we've talked about a lot, is looking really at the timeline that we are identifying students. So there's no rush either for parents thinking they have to get in an appeal before the summer. At the high, at the middle school, once they are in a pathway, they would appeal to Deble, our REACH coordinator, if they wanted to move levels at the middle school. When you start moving levels, of course, you miss contact, and that's a concern of ours. So that's the other reason we identify the students. We would be able to think through if we needed to offer any support for students over the summer, should they be skipping grades of math particularly. At the high school, the placement process at the high school is, is a matrix or rubric of four categories. The first category is their eighth-grade report card information, learning approach, and a placement test, and then explore data. And right now, that's the information that's used to identify an appropriate class for students to go into in four categories: world language, science, math, and English Language Arts. We would like to start having conversations with staff, teachers, and community members about the placement process. And we will do that next school year and take it through the Learning and Teaching Committee. Any feedback, any recommendations we may get in modifications to the placement process, we would bring forward. We would have hold meetings. We would bring it to the Learning and Teaching Committee, and then bring it to the final board. That's what we would like to work on next year. So get on the Learning and Teaching Committee tonight. Be exciting. Any questions? We will bring it to a meeting of the whole two. Yes?
So, you know, as the representatives of the community, I think we, a lot of times we get our information from the community, so I just wanna verify with you, because as I've been watching Little League, I've been hearing a lot about this, as people have been getting their letters for REACH. Is it true that at some schools, I heard particularly at Hawthorne, that the REACH program shrunk, that the number of kids in it went from 25 to 5, or that there was some small, some number in it really shrunk? Is there truth to that? Are we keeping our program size about the same? Are we growing it, shrinking it? Can you tell me what's going on?
There should be no major change this year. However, what you have to think about with a REACH program, really, you should be identifying the top 5 percent. So we, at some point, we will be coming forward with a recommendation of really bringing that to the top 5 percent. We're right now at about the 20 to 23 percent. This year, we did not lower those numbers. But what happens is, it's the top 20, 23 percent this year of the district. So sometimes Hawthorne could have high numbers, and sometime they could have low numbers, depending on the population of students.
So it's not done by school? It's done by district?
No, it's done by the district. So it's the top 5 percent for the district. So it's the top 5% for the district.
I assumed that smaller schools would have smaller programs, larger schools have larger programs. Oh, okay, so that's interesting. That's why. So the student might have moved with, or the students at the school might have moved from within the district.
Correct.
Oh, interesting.
So this year, they could be the smallest population, next year, they could be the largest population. Again, it's dependent on the students, where they fall within the district.
I just want to confirm what you said, which is that the process, if we wanted to discuss how our district does this, and it would be through learning and teaching, it's going to be open to input from the community, staff, teachers, but that's the avenue we should take, starting in the fall?
Correct. We've always wanted to, with Deble coming on, really talk to parents, let them know what research says about gifted education. And there's a perfect example, that it's the top 5% of the district, not of each individual building. And really talking about what kind of gifted program do we want to be, and really involving the parents and teachers and principals in that conversation.
And I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on that, too, just because, you know, as we've been talking to, you know, we're in the middle of a superintendent search, and as we've been talking to different people, we've been hearing different philosophies, and there are different philosophies out there about how to approach this. And I think it's really gotten the board talking about what we want for our district. And so, yeah, I'm excited that we're talking about this, and I'd love, you know, you're the expert on this, and I'm really curious to hear your thoughts on it, too. So thank you.
Perfect.
Two questions. In my, the first question is in regards to the high school. Well, actually, I have three questions. Okay. So the first question in regard to the high school subcomponent. I heard an appeal process outlined for the middle school and the elementary school. Is there an appeal process for the high school level?
They do have, when the scores are tabulated, there is what's considered a review category, where if the student falls within the review category, the eighth-grade teacher is asked again to give their feedback. There is no appeal from the parent standpoint, as there is at elementary and middle. Students can take the placement tests, though, in math, a couple times to see if, because, you know, they take the placement test in December, and we allow them other opportunities as they've had more content given to them.
I, I may have missed it, but I did, I also did not hear, when you were talking about the criteria for the high school, I did not hear a cognitive piece mentioned in the high school.
You are correct. There is no, the recommendation right now is the COGAT to go up to seventh grade, second grade, fifth grade, seventh grade. By then, we should have a cognitive score. You know, cognitive scores wouldn't change too much within, you know, you don't, you don't give it every year. It shouldn't change drastically. And so by, if we use the seventh-grade cognitive score to get them into a class at eighth grade, then their placement should help them.
And the only reason I'm bringing that up is for any students whom I'd have transferred in past that seventh-grade timeframe.
We could give them the COGAT then.
Okay, excellent.
And then my last question. I misplaced it. I'll come back. Sorry.
Oh, found it.
So the current rubric process was implemented five years ago without nearly as rigorous of a process as you're proposing to potentially take it away again. How long will the process you're proposing take?
I think we'd be able to work it out through next school year.
Okay. In the meantime, parents that think their kids deserve a chance at a more rigorous curriculum, what do they do?
Well, you know, I think we can work it out through next school year, and we can certainly, if they're already at, we're talking about York, if they're already at York, they could certainly, if it's something that the committee recommends, I think that even students that are already at York, you know, once you get into a pathway, you shouldn't be stuck in that pathway. We should be able to allow the students to move within that pathway according to what's appropriate for them. So I think that if the committee has this conversation and talks about changes, then they should be dynamic in nature. We should be able to make those based on the student and where they are at that time.
When you talk about restricting a gifted program to the top 5%, I mean, I have no problem with a gifted program at 3% or 5%, but reach, as we have implemented it today, certainly is our more rigorous curriculum. And my understanding, the research shows that opening up a more rigorous curriculum to more students raises student achievement. Are we talking about withdrawing the reach program from potentially 15% to 20% of our kids?
No, I think when you're talking about, I'll speak specifically to math, because English language arts is a little different. When you're talking about math and you're talking about that gifted child, you're talking about a two-year acceleration program. And that would mean geometry by eighth grade. Kids are not all ready for geometry by eighth grade. And so I do believe that the top 5% fall into that range. I think that then, a single Excel route is algebra by eighth grade. I certainly think that we have the numbers in this district, if not more than just the 21% to 23% that can go into algebra by eighth grade, which would still be an accelerated, rigorous pathway for our students. In terms of English language arts, it's very different. English language arts is not an accelerated program. We should be meeting the needs of all of our students regardless of where they are. So in other words, we can be teaching on the unit, a unit on identity, and making sure that every student is reading a text that's appropriate for them regardless, so we're all learning the same topic. We're all learning, we're all learning about the same theme. They're all learning the same standards. But our students that can read more complex text will be given more complex text. The students that can do it more independently will be doing it more independently. The students that need more support from teachers will be getting more support from teachers. And I think in an English language arts classroom, we should be doing that. And that's how we raise the rigor, is the complex text and the level of teacher support that the students receive. So that's why ELA is a little different, because it's not accelerated. Math should be an accelerated program.
So in ELA, I mean, the College Board publishes a list, 100 books, or 101 books, maybe you should read before taking the ACT. I find a lot more of those books in the reach curriculum, and almost none of them in the regular curriculum. Now, are you talking about differentiation within the same curriculum? So we would be withdrawing a more rigorous curriculum away?
Not if we get all of the kids in those 101 books, and we differentiate our instructions so that all those students have access to that complex text.
Then we should start with the, with the regular curriculum.
And we're developing it this summer. That's what we'll be working on, is our English language arts curriculum. We're going to be talking to our staff about more complex text. You know, typically in high schools, we get kids to what a lexile score, it's that quantitative score, about, typically, I find, a lot of classic texts are at about 1,050 is your highest. Whereas when students enter college or careers, they're accessing text of a 1,300 lexile. So we're really going to be challenging our teachers this summer, when they're writing the ELA, English language arts curriculum, that we want them in those more complex texts. What happens is how the teacher instructs that text to the student. Some students can do it more independently. Some students will need more guidance from their teachers. Some kids will read the more complex text, while other ones read a less complex text, but they do it more independently. Because we want students to also be independent in their text. So I don't think that we're bringing it down. I think we're going to raise it up for everybody.
Okay. All in favor of raising it up for everybody?
We will raise it up.
Thank you.
I'm going to kind of repeat some of the things that Jim is saying, just to clarify, to make sure. So, because we, at first, it's, you know, we will, we need to be clear, if we're saying we have like 20, I'm going to roughly say 23% today, and we're going to 5%, is what do we do with those lagging 15%, right? 18%? So what you're saying is this summer, in particular with ELA, we'll have professional development go through the ELA program to raise up the read, the books, the text that they're going to be using, and all of the English classes? Help me understand the transition.
We will be starting a curriculum development process this summer, as Mr. Purnow has talked about it being a K-12 curriculum development process. What we will challenge the teachers to think about is, they're creating this curriculum, and then they're creating the units. Because resources are just part of the curriculum. It's not the curriculum. We really want to make sure that we having, we are having students access complex text. When you look at text complexity, there's three categories you look at. You look at that quantitative, which is that lexile. And are you getting students in more progressively complex text in terms of quantitative? There's also the qualitative. Does the text provide something that the students need? A lot of those classics may fall under that qualitative. Of Mice and Men is a 650 lexile, which is really about a second or third grader lexile score, now, third or fourth grader. But a lot of teachers would still say, yes, but it provides this qualitatively for our students. So how you get to that complex text, then, is that third category, which is your reader and your purpose. And that's how you differentiate your instruction. So in that case, a 650 lexile for high school students, you're not going to be reading it chapter by chapter with the teacher in the front of the room reading it aloud. Students don't need that. That's not complex text. They're going to be much more independent. With the Chromebooks, they're going to be researching other aspects of the book, other things that come into play, and connect those. And they'll be doing that much more independently. This curriculum development process will allow us to get to that. Then there'll be another text that they will read, that will be a higher lexile, and so that quantitative score is high, the qualitative score is fine, but the reader and the purpose now, the teacher may have to guide the students through the text a little bit more, because the quantitative score is so high. That's how you get to complex text. That's what we'll be talking, our curriculum development team through, so that we have the right resources. A lot of times where you find those higher lexiles are in informational text. So they could be reading a text that's a lower lexile, but the teacher is finding other supplemental texts that they would read, and they would bring that information together. So there's a lot of ways to accomplish this. We just need to work with our curriculum development team. And then we'll provide a lot of professional learning next summer, as we roll out the curriculum, on how the teachers can do that in the classroom. Did that answer?
So the next question, I'm going to ask a clarifying question first. So when you refer to reach, it's kindergarten through eighth, and you're talking about pathways, because that's high school, right?
Right, it's third through eighth, reach. And I say pathways because I don't like the connotation of track. I don't think it's not tracking, it's a pathway for students. And they are dynamic in nature.
Okay, so at the high school with the pathways, what's the process?
Right now, it's at eighth grade. They look at ACT explore, sorry, not ACT, explore data, grades, a district placement test, and learning characteristics, which is, learning characteristics is the classroom. When you look to place students into a reach or any kind of program, you really want to triangulate the data. Typically, that would be the cognitive score, the achievement score, and the learning, or the classroom score. In this case, as Dr. Harrell pointed out, there is no cognitive necessarily for the York placement. But you certainly have a lot of information in terms of student's achievement and student's work ethic through the learning characteristics. That information is put together, and then students fall into where, what class would be the best. Some of them fall into a review, which would be like an appeals process, where the teachers are asked to look at those scores again and make a final recommendation.
Okay, so that's entering high school.
That's entering high school.
And then, is the process working with the teachers or the counselor for changing pathways once you're at high school?
Right, yes. Yeah, they work, yes, they work with their teacher and their counselor, and I have been promised that no pathway is static, that a student can move up if they have found some success at one, you know, if they're in a standard and they want to go into honors the next year, and the teacher feels they can do it, they can, they can, they can go there.
Okay, and then this is talking about student placement process for, I'm going to call it the reach in the higher level, right? It's not the cohort? It's not, or is it everything?
It's cohort.
Like the reading?
Oh, yes. No, that would, they would place them into the, any, any class, yes. What I wanted to, the reason I started with reach with placement, because that's the first time placement occurs in the district, not at York. Placement really starts with our reach identification. So I wanted you to see the whole K-12 perspective.
Okay, so we do, we can assume everything is under student placement when we talk about it? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. So the move from the 20% down to the 5%, is that occurring from this year to next year's?
Right, it's not occurring yet. So in other words, if they're in the 23% already, we're not going to tell you, no, you're out. What, we will start doing it with next year's group, start identifying the students from then on. So it will be like a rolling. Now, we will still continue to identify the top 5% from seventh grade to eighth grade, the top 5% to 8%. You know, 5% is not a hard and true number. We really look at the students. The top 5% to 8% are going into what is termed geometry with computer programming, or G-O-C-P, because I have to get acronyms in. And you, those kids will be going into a geometry with computer programming, which will mirror a little more closely the enriched geometry. They're going to be in extended, it's going to be a 50-minute period at the middle school. We're going to provide some professional learning for those teachers this summer with our York enriched geometry teacher. And then we'll also have a geometry class similar to what's running this year, which is more like a standard geometry, the 10th grade geometry class.
Okay. So at the grade school level, are you saying that it's starting with next year's third grade?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, second graders get identified. Second graders get identified.
Next year's second graders being identified is going to be the smaller percentage?
Correct.
Okay. And then, did you say that that means that in the classroom, there'll be greater differentiation then for the percentages that aren't in the reach, but that are, okay?
Right. We should always be differentiating for our kids and making sure we're meeting them where they are. And the other thing that we're doing this summer, too, and I know you weren't asking this, but your questions are making me think about this. I talked about before, when a student goes into gifted, they skip one or two years of math. Are they going to the Excel, single accelerated, or double accelerated? Another thing we're working on this June is compacting the curriculum, where students would take three years of math in two years. So we used to say, congratulations, you're gifted, skip two years of math. And they were typically skipping like sixth and seventh, which is ratios proportions. I mean, that's cornerstone of math. And so what we're doing is, Dave Beatty, our STEM coordinator, has a group coming in to compact the curriculum. And we'll compact some at the elementary level, so those kids that are going from second grade to third grade, they will get third and fourth grade curriculum in one year. The other thing is you cannot skip third grade, when it's the introductions of fractions. You would have major gaps in your, in your math. And then they'll compact somewhere else at the middle school level, so again, kids are not missing any math.
Okay.
So the rubric that we use to place students at York, do we have any statistical evidence that it accurately places students?
The teachers feel that it is accurately placing, but I think that that's great information that I would ask the high school to provide when we have one of our meetings next, next school year.
And, I mean, just a philosophical question. And again, students going into York, a student who wants to be challenged, who wants to see if they can challenge themselves to move up a level, why would we stand in their way?
I think that's a question to ask the committee.
Just, if I can respond to that, the one caution I would have is, if you have a student who's, let's say, really believes they can do the challenge, and all indications are they can't, because they haven't had any history background, and all of a sudden I want to jump up to an advanced class, what happens to that student after they start failing the class? And now what happens to their whole high school experience when they are badly failing in class, and when do you put them back? Then that's, that's the balancing act you're going to have to talk through as you go through this process, is how confident are you in the placement process you have right now? What other factors can you bring in and should consider? And what is And what is the expectation for students who reach out and do do a challenge? I think, I think it's a good thing to have, but I think you have to have some cautionary tales there and some understanding that if it's not working, this is what's going to happen. Because I've seen this in other districts where students are placed, and then the burden becomes, well, it's the school district's responsibility now to make sure my child's successful in that advanced calculus class. Even though they had no indication they were ready for the advanced calculus class. Now, the parent may say, what are you going to do to provide tutoring and extra help for my child to make sure they're successful? And that's above and beyond what I think you would normally do for a student in a class like that. You're not going to, you know, you can't have teachers then teach it on Saturday because we placed a child in a class that is really struggling with the class.
I think, at least the cases I'm familiar with, it's, it's the kid that's on that cusp that, that, that is asking. You know, a kid that's under review. And, you know, if a kid can't hack the class, I certainly understand. But York has a phenomenal math lab. They have phenomenal teachers that come in early and stay late. And, I mean, I think at some point, the kid just says, you know what, no mas. I'm placed too high, let me move back where I can succeed. And, I mean, personally, I think we should allow them to do that at any time during the semester where they are drowning. We should...
I think you want safeguards though, Jim. I think you want to say, if they're not making it, what happens? What's the remedial plan?
Yeah, I think clearly the counselor needs to review that with the kid and their parents, clearly.
And that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I just have a quick comment. When you're talking about other factors in the rubric, I'd like to discuss having a parental input factor. We don't have that in any of the rubrics that I'm aware of. And we used to have that five years ago. So there was a shift, I don't know why, five years ago. You were there.
We were trying to emulate Stevens in high school.
Okay, so that's something I'd like to talk about, is having that parental voice. Because a lot of times, there's, there's not a communication going on from one grade to the next. So the parent could be that, that bridge of communication that might break down without having that key person there.
One last question. If you could, you did give some of the information about this committee that's going to be, okay. Could you talk about, and I think I heard you gave me the timeline, but you, could you talk, or restate again, about what's the overall objective of this committee? And what, what they think the outcome of this will be?
The committee will really take two focuses. One thing is, we really want to talk to, to parents, teachers, principals about our gifted program. And what we want our gifted program to be. And to really understand what the research states about gifted programming and, and make that work. The second one then would be about identification of placement. What role does the parent have in, in placement? What's the timeline we need to have for placement? So parents have the time for an appeal or for a conversation. What data are we using to identify and to place students? And do we know that that data best identifies the students? So very similar to all the questions you've been asking, would be exactly what this, this committee would work on next year. My goal would, you know, we can't wait on this. My goal would to, so that it's in place, these conversations take place, so that we have something as we're starting to identify students a year from now. Well, you know, we start the identification process way back in December, January for the next school year, but that we'd have a way we want to go for next year.
So I'm not on the committee. So I'm going to share my experience. And I hope I explain it in a lot of different perspectives. So my children were going to District 205 when the parental, the parents could sign, moving in from eighth grade to high school. For both of my children, different subjects, I signed. And they did well. We did look at the entire package, the entire curriculum. What are they going to be placed in, in every subject area? We looked at, you know, is it too much to be placing you at the top, or, you know what I mean, the highest level at all of those courses? And we didn't do that for my daughter. And we talked about why. But we chose to lower her from an honors to a regular in one subject area and move her up in another. We also, in ELA, we looked at reading versus writing. And she was stronger in writing, so she should have moved up to honors. But in, in reading, it was lower. So we, we actually went to the Elmhurst Public Library and got the books on audio because she was a slower reader. And so that's how she was able to keep up with the books and the content. And it worked for my kids. So I guess what I wanted to do, since I'm not part of this, and I know that we parents and adults in the system can, can overlook what the true abilities are and, and overcommit our children. So I would really be cautious of that. But in our case, it, it really worked out well for both of my, my children. But we looked at it balanced, we looked at it from their perspective, we looked at where they had strengths and weaknesses. And, you know, we did monitor that. So I guess I would, I would really want us to think about adding that, that component. And of course, the cautionary pieces. But it allowed them to excel through this system. And it allowed them to excel in college.
If I may, just, just one more thing under superintendent communication. Later on in your board pack, you have a personnel report. In that personnel report is a recommendation to hire an assistant principal for Bryan. Melissa, in our new assistant principal, I've been sitting out in the audience very patiently. So I'm going to ask Melissa if she would introduce the recommendation that will come to the board later on. Yeah, you should go up there too, yeah.
Awesome, all right. As you will find in your package, after two rounds of interviewing, both with a admin committee and then the full team at Bryan of 10, actually 13 representatives of our staff and departments, I would like to recommend to the board to hire Jason Crockett as the new assistant principal at Bryan Middle School.
Jason, why don't you share real briefly where you're coming from and where your experience has been?
Hello. I'm coming from Peacock Middle School in Itasca, Illinois. I taught social studies there for 10 years. And I've worked on numerous committees with RTI, PBIS, leadership responsibilities, team leader responsibilities, everything I can think of, not to mention my 250 hours of internship with my principal. So I've, I'm ready for this, and I'm very excited. And obviously very nervous, but I can do this. And again, I thank you guys, and I appreciate it.
Welcome to the dark side. Thank you. Go home and do homework now.
Real board meeting minutes, are there any revisions? There are a lot of minutes. April 25th, April 27th, April 28th, May 5th, May 12th, May 20th. Wow, okay. Maybe this means we're speed through the rest of this? Okay, board committee appointments. Do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I sent out a note to everyone. Said, anybody want to change? And got nothing back with the exception of Emily. And Emily, well, we are, we're...
Chris Walton's committee, please.
No, no. Oh, oh. No, that's, that's not what she said. Emily just, Emily, along with every other SACAD rep that we've had, with the exception of Karen, thanks, thanks there's perhaps a more efficient way to handle going to SACAD meetings. And we just need to talk about that. So, anyway, so we're going to leave the committees stand as they were this year. No, we're, you're still on, you're, you're, you're still on SACAD. It's, as Shannon says, it's a work in progress to get you off of there.
Thank you for at least acknowledging that you heard what I requested.
We, we did.
Committee reports? I want to make one comment. I, Learning and Teaching Committee is on this agenda here, number 10, but that update was given April 28th. Yeah. Okay, so Finance and Operations Committee, Chris?
Okay, two of these, the one though, the first one on the 4th of May was the financing plan that was presented at our last board meeting. So that, that does not need to be addressed. The second one relates to a meeting we had on the 18th. Can Chris jump in if I say anything wrong? March and April monthly financial reports, again, on plan, on budget, although a lot of it depends upon what the property tax collections end up looking like on June 1st. But we're tracking. Facility usage fees, are those on the agenda tonight, Chris? Are they coming next time?
Next time.
So the proposal was to increase facility usage fees by CPI. So that would come to the next, the next board meeting for formal approval. Fund balance policy. Chris brought up that, based on PMA projections, 26% of budgeted expenditures in the operating fund may be too low given where we end up hitting a cash low point in the future. I think the question back to Chris was, we seem to be targeting a derivative. And there's all kinds of reasons why we talked about this before and came to the conclusion to stick with it. And I apologize, but we're going to ask him to do it again. And what we're really budgeting for, targeting, is not running out of money on May 31st. So there may be a way to take a June 30th audited number, subtract out a tax payment, and get to a number at pro forma for May 31st that would be more in line with what we're trying to target. The point being, is that number's supposed to be set to end up with more than zero in the bank at May 31st. So he's, Chris is going to dust off some of the other districts' ways that they do it. And we're going to revisit that at the board table to really, again, make sure that we're set up not to run out of money on May 31st. So that was the gist of that. Chris provided the final transportation report from consultants. As you know, that, that engagement shifted towards help with the current contract. But they also provided us with some information. And I don't know, Chris, if you can give a few seconds on that?
As Chris said, it was, the engagement ended up being more about the, the RFP process and the bid specifications to allow the district the benefits of more clearly defining expectations with the, with the bus company. And they, the, the report also talked about other ways. But, but a few things that they talked about was, was using a, or the, the district should require the use of a transportation routing software by the bus company. And we, we put that in the specs, and first student will be using that. The other thing was that the bus company should be using GPS technology in order to track information available, live environment, allow for immediate location and vehicle status display. Live problems can be handled such as parent calls, driver issues, emergency locations. Dispatchers can send closest buses to emergency or on-the-flight pickups. Data is retrieved automatically with no manual process. The other thing that they talked about, they talked some about bell times. The strategic management of bell time supports the ability to use a bus as many times as possible throughout the operational day using a concept known as tiering. While a tiered system is desirable, is very common in more urban areas, its implementation can be challenging in that the use of this routing efficiency strategy requires the staggering of school bell times. The more separation in bell times, the more efficient can be the routes. But this must be balanced against what the school board considers to be optimum bell times and the needs of those students who are not serviced by the transportation system. They also talked about, as the system is currently designed, routing effectiveness and efficiency is constrained by the current bell's time structure. The time structure significantly impacts the afternoon routes, causing at least 12 runs to routinely run late for their second-tier afternoon pickups according to data provided. Increasing the available time between bells in the afternoon would allow for improved on-time performance for second-tier schools. Additionally, the lengthening of the service time on every tier would also allow for improved capacity utilization across the system. Those were just a few of the things I wanted to point out in the final report by the consultants.
And Chris, is that available for the rest of the folks? Okay.
It was on the, it was on the finance committee meeting of that, from that date.
Um, May 18th.
May 18th, yes.
Okay, excellent. So if you're interested in some light reading, it's there. And then finally, Chris had brought to us, policy and collection of fees. I think that was in light of some of the discussion we had around Chromebooks and payment and whatnot. And I think the, the answer that Chris gave to us is that we're using all means available to us within reason. And, you know, I think he just wanted to make sure that we were all aware of what those were. I don't know if there's anything else, Chris, on that? No, so, that's it?
I have a question about the, the users, the, the large volume users. Do they know about the July date? Okay.
Will you get that set, Chris?
They will. But we haven't, we haven't set that out. That's on my assistant's calendar to do, to, we picked a couple of dates. And we're going to send an email out to them.
So just to clarify, I think, as it pertains to York, we've been having a lot of, having a lot of issues with scheduling, with people overcommitting time to make sure they have it and then releasing it back and paying a fee, but then not being used. So as a district, we get paid. But as a community, we lose the utility because we all can't just get in a room and talk. And so if you look at it, there are, well, there are five main users, but two or three major users. And I, and I think what we, we agreed to do was, was invite them all into a room together as adults and say, here's the calendar, here are the available dates. Let's all work this out to the benefit of our kids and our community and see if we can do that. And if we can't do that, then we're going to go back to an auction system and good luck. But at the end of the day, hopefully, I think the Park District uses a similar kind of approach. And hopefully, the adults can, can solve this and make it run a bit more smoothly. And hopefully, also remove a little bit of a headache from the AD at the high school as he, as he goes through programming there, that we've got folks that have divvied it up and fully understand who's using what when. That's, that was the point.
Okay, moving on. Superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. There are two items, personnel report and financial reports. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay. I need a motion for the consent agenda?
A move, we adopt the superintendent's consent agenda items A and B.
Second?
I second the motion.
Okay, moved by Jan, seconded by Karen. Any, well, I guess there's no discussion. Okay, roll call vote?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that passes. Okay, superintendent's action items, A through E. Okay, Superintendent's Action Items, A through E.
The first item you have in front of you is an approval of a resolution to transfer money from the Education, Operation, and Maintenance Funds to the Debt Service Funds.
Any discussion?
I think we need a motion first.
Okay, right, right. I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to transfer money from the Education, Operation, and Maintenance Funds to the Debt Service Fund for the purpose of payment of technology leases and debt certificates for fiscal year 15.
Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Margaret. Okay, any discussion?
Perhaps we could have just a, just a quick description of what items A and B do. I think they're rather mechanical.
Yes. Item A, the auditor, for A and B, the auditors require that the board approve a resolution when transferring funds, transferring between funds. Item A has to do with, all debts are, in the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, supposed to be paid out of the Debt Service Fund. The transfer from the Education Fund is related to the technology leases, and the transfer from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund is related to the debt certificates on this building and the stadium. And so, that's item A. Item B is a resolution to transfer from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. This transfer is to fund the projects that are happening this summer, because we don't have any money left in the Capital Projects Fund or Life Safety Fund. This transfer of 1.4 million. The other thing in the budget that is for the same purpose was a TIF surplus distribution in the budget at 100,000. That, that distribution, we have not yet received from the city. I've, I've emailed them and called them, they're, they've got an audit going on, it's got to go before the committee, but we still have not received that tran, that TIF surplus distribution. So, the budget has 1.4 million from this transfer, and then 100,000 from that TIF surplus distribution that we didn't receive yet. So, that, this transfer will, and the summer projects are Bryan, Tuck Pointing, Jefferson, Tuck Pointing, Mannerson, Tuck Pointing, Hawthorne Roof. These are all the projects we've been talking about. The biggest item this summer is the, the building automation system at York, and Chiller at Hawthorne, and then some other smaller projects. But, so that's what this item B is to transfer funds for those summer projects.
Let's take one at a time. Oh, do you have a question about item A? Okay. Let's, let's vote on item A, and then we need a motion for item B. Okay, Ellen?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. It's seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, I need a motion for item B.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution of the Board of Education directing the school treasurer to transfer funds from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Project Fund.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Is there any discussion? Thank you for your update on that, Chris. Any discussion on item B?
I have just one question. This type of transfer, is it something that needs to be addressed in the five-year projection? Or is it just an internal transfer that doesn't change that five-year?
We had put it in there. The five-year projections are based on the budget, and this is in the budget.
I didn't see you.
Now, it's my understanding we're relying on these TIF payments that were agreed to in, in 2004 to maintain our buildings for the next 10 years. Is that our, I mean, that Capital Projects Fund is out of money, so we have two choices. We can go to the voter, pass a referendum, and borrow money to maintain our buildings, or we can rely upon these, the TIF payments for the next 10 years, as agreed upon with the city in 2004 for the maintenance of our buildings. But the estimate from the city seems to get smaller and smaller every year. Is that correct?
I guess I would say yes. They, they do, they have been getting smaller projections as, as, as we've gone on, yes.
Thank you.
What are the factors that would make these things turn out less than what was projected?
I think it's the EAVs, the EAV increasing in the TIF area. So, they must have been projecting larger increases in EAV than what has transpired.
Anything else, item B? Okay, we need a roll call vote?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Approval of resolution ascertaining prevailing wages.
Yeah, state statute requires that the school district annually ascertain prevailing wages paid to workers employed by contractors that we hire for projects, and so this is a resolution that annually you approve.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the prevailing wage resolution as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Any, any discussion? Okay.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, we have two donations tonight. One is from Churchville, and the other from Edison. Someone want to talk about Churchville? Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Churchville School PTA in the amount of $1,908 for two water bottle refilling stations. The donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved by Karen, seconded by John. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you to Churchville, thank you to the PTA, thank you for the parents for supporting our students and employees at Churchville.
Do we vote one at a time, or? One at a time? Okay, go ahead, yeah.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. The second donation is from Edison Elementary School. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the $8,300 donation from the Edison School PTA and the $2,500 donation from Kickoff for Kids to renovate the outdoor garden at Edison School. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Moved by Karen, seconded by Emily. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to thank the, not only the Edison community and PTA, but Kickoff for Kids, who have raised funds and supported our schools and students and employees over the years, and so, thank you very much.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Action on closed session items, Student Residency.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution regarding the homeless dispute.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Moved by Emily, seconded by Karen. Any discussion? Okay. That's a roll call vote.
Yes, it's a resolution.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Upcoming meetings, Thursday, May 28th, in two days, Special Board of Education meeting. I wanted to add June 10th for learning and teaching. It's Wednesday, June 10th. And then Tuesday, June 23rd, Board of Education meeting. Board Communications. Are there any Board Communications? I have one. I wanted to talk about a possible summer retreat, if the board wants to do that. We should probably find a date and talk about agenda items.
I thought about sending that around, and I thought I would be stoned by the board looking for yet another date, but, but I support that idea.
It takes a while for, for seven people to get a common date. We should start early.
So, shall we poll for July?
Yes.
Okay. We'll have Ellen do that.
Okay. Okay, so, the board is going to go back into closed session. We need a roll call vote to go back into closed, oh, Emily?
I move that we move back into closed session for the purposes of discussing employment of employee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that's a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays, we'll move into closed session. Thank you.
And we should point out that there'll be no action coming out of this closed session.